I think we need to set that camera way down.
Turn the mic back on. Okay, we're ready to move again, Ms. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, before Ms. Harris gets started, we are doing the follow-up from last week's conversation, and Ms. Harris will highlight from the agenda in yellow some of the ads. We had a lot of ads from council members based upon the conversation last week. We did say we have some, what we'll call wiggle room, within our revenue forecast to address some of the proposed increases that council wanted us to look at. So Ms. Harris will outline that, but I want to encourage council to maybe keep a calculator handy as we think about some of these new items you may want to add to the operating budget, and even some positions and things we can talk through. But as we close out today, I want to make sure that I'm clear with what you want to see for the first reading on May 27th, and make sure that we have a kind of a finite number, with or without a millage increase, and Ms. Harris will walk you through that now. So Ms. Harris?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, council members. I will, with that, go ahead and just begin to walk us through where we ended last time, and so our budget goals have remained the same, that we're staying in alignment with our strategic plan, making sure we maintain fiscal health, address competitive compensation and benefits for our staff, address technology needs, impact of growth, and making plans for our future, and delivering high-level services across all of our departments. And so several of the slides are, it's really just a review of where we were last time. We've made sure to highlight any of those that have been changes since the last time to incorporate your feedback. And so looking at our revenue, this is just a snapshot of the new revenue that we estimate for next year, with the bottom line across the top six primary revenue sources of just over $8 million. A summary of the total general fund with the top six summarized at the top in that $61 million number of the bottom line total, and this is incorporating adjustments that we've made since last time, total general fund revenue of just over $104 million. All right, and so I won't suffer you to go through every single position adjustment. Again, these are exactly the same as before that we presented. And so with changes to the position adjustments, we included the career ladder request, career ladder adjustment for the coroner's department, for six staff to address certifications that they have, of $7,500 for each of those six positions. And so the dollar amount there includes the benefits on top of that. Public safety communications, an upgrade for the director position, as well as an adjustment, and crime clearance rate adjustment for the sheriff's position. So the total there, bringing the position adjustments to just over $457,000. We also talked about potentially addressing not just the increase to the $15 minimum for all of our staff, that were below the 15, but also trying to find a way to address compression. And so the dollar amount here that we've estimated to address compression, it is an estimated amount, but what we looked at is anyone who, after the increase to the $15 minimum, was, anyone who was above $15.50, up to as high as $17.92, or $18, to begin to address compression, adjusting by an additional 3%. And so this amount here doesn't represent that, but we've kind of looked at a couple different models on how to address that, but this was just kind of the first approach at being able to address any of those that were already above that amount, so that everyone shifts on the pay schedule at the same time. And so as we continue to look at new positions, I'll go ahead and just track us through until we get to anything new since the last time that we met. We talked about an adjustment that was needed in the one-line item there for the sheriffs and animal shelter positions. The correction there was bringing that amount down to the $565,000, and so it was decreasing that one line by $122,000. And so we've taken that into account as we have done ads and adjustments to decreases for this overview. And so the additional items that have been placed here is in economic development. There's two part-time positions for interns, $6,000 apiece. For each of these, as well, any non-personnel costs for cell phones, desktop, laptops, any of the extended items that go with these positions is included in these amounts in the EMS department and accreditation officer. And then you'll see here for EMS as well, as, well, both in EMS, there's three additional. We already had three EMTs in the initial recommendation. And so to address new staffing, new station staffing, we've added three additional EMTs, as well as three paramedics for the new station. Parks and Rec, we've added the adaptive sports coordinator in solid waste, a solid waste coordinator, and we've also added in the part-time positions for convenience sites to increase their services for an additional two days a week. And we've also adjusted the per-hour amount. So initially, that calculation was done at the lower end of the pay scale, at $12 an hour. So we've adjusted that, that if these positions are added, it would be at that $15 proposed minimum. And so the amount, the $194,000 and change, reflects that adjustment. And so with new position, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Same before, yeah, before she moves on, is make sure these are positions that were mentioned to me after or during the budget discussion last week. These aren't necessarily recommendations, so we'll definitely want to have more conversation about these. But once Ms. Harris goes forward, we'll put the full picture together for you so you can see what that total impact is, but want to make sure we're just clear.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
And I would like council to consider possibly adding another vehicle up there and letting another, well, we got to the vehicles, is staffing them. And I think there's room to staff another vehicle in the new, up off of 160. And that's something that I would like to see council consider, because, you know, second save lives, and either we either had to fund it this year or next year. And I believe that is what actually could save more than one person's life. And I know we're not talking about positions, I mean, just positions, but I do, can I make one comment not related to positions? Or would you rather me wait?
No, you can.
I would, you know, we've had some terrible situations happen in this county in the last few days, and technology has helped solve those crimes. And I would like to see us commit additional funds to our camera system, possibly adding an additional 30 cameras that costs about $125,000 a year. And if, you know, I think if you had any questions, you could, I would let law enforcement comment on, you know, what this would do for the safety of, possibly do for the safety of our citizens here in the county. So that's all I got to say right now.
And I agree with Steve, especially with the technology that was able to solve the crime that happened last week. And if, including that in our budget, it's going to help make us county more safe, I agree. But I wanted to speak to the adaptive sports coordinator. That position will be created, not created, but will provide service to our special needs children. And I think that's very important, that we, in our rec department, that we're able to do something to our special needs kids and work with them. So I think that that position is very important.
You know, I think we, as a county, are judged by how we treat our children. And so often, special needs children are sort of put in the background, and they're not really allowed out there. And we really need to bring that into focus and bear in the county. So I would agree that that position needs to be in there. Also, the six EMS personnel, is that, that's for full year?
Correct, that is a full-year number with their residual equipment, different things.
And I was just thinking, you know, by the time the budget gets passed and we hire somebody, we're probably going to be through the first quarter. So we might just want to consider putting nine months of salary in there, and that'll save us a little bit in the budget, but it should work out timing-wise if we're able to get up and running. Any other comments?
I would, I've been definitely very focused on EMS. I'd like to make sure that we are doing what Mr. Cato is expecting, or what he needs. So if he could come up and just, I'd like to make sure that these, these positions are what he's looking for and fulfills what he's expecting.
Yes, yes, sir, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, council. The six positions that we just, Mr. Marsall talked about, our plans are to put them at the Indianland Station. So we would staff that additional truck, like you were talking about, Mr. Harper. So that would give us four trucks in Indianland, plus a QRV.
Okay.
The only question that I really had was the accreditation officer. When I did my presentation, I asked for two positions, accreditation officer and an equipment manager. And I told you that if I had to choose between the two, the equipment officer this year and the accreditation officer would be later on. That was something that's kind of a luxury thing that we want to get to. It's a goal standard in EMS, and there's currently not any county services in South Carolina that are accredited, so we would like to be one of the first. But I don't think this is the year to do that, for obviously some other reasons. But the equipment officer is vitally important because it maintains the 25 ambulances that we have. It runs around to the 12 different hospitals that we deliver equipment to, backboards, ECOTs, stair chairs, we have to pick those up, we have to maintain those, we have to clean them. It schedules all the county AEDs. So if a fire department has a process, or the rec department, or the sheriff's issue has an issue with the AED during the year, this person takes care of that. I've told you before, we got nine households that we have to keep up. We have Lorentzoscopes that cost, in other words, of $10,000 that we have to maintain. All those have to be PMed, our stretchers have to be PMed. So there's a lot of additional things that we don't have time to do and keep clean. This person would maintain that. And also, I would build into this, the running, since Brandon has moved now the shop, we can move equipment back and forth in ease with him. So that's what I had envisioned for this position to do.
That means that you can put off that accreditation person and put the equipment person in.
I would just like a title change, if you take the word accreditation manager, strike through it and write equipment manager, same salary, same everything.
Okay.
And then I'm good to go.
Okay.
And other than that, I think we should be covered this year, Mr. Graham.
Okay. What I do, another comment is, on the IT side, there is a IT technician that starts, talks about support EMS equipment needs. Is that, if, if, if the accreditation manager is replaced with basically the equipment manager piece, is that IT tech still need, or is that two separate things?
No, it will. It was to address both needs with one person.
Okay.
So the hope was, is that if, knowing limited constraints and funding, could we take, in the past, we've had the IT when there isn't an equipment manager, the IT folks have certainly been the ones who've helped keep up the cardiac monitors to do some of the equipment things, not to the extent that he was just talking about with cleaning and other preventive maintenance. But yes, the thought was, can we help meet his need for technology and equipment with the IT position? There's enough work with the IT position with our growing, if we're going to add 28 new positions, there's enough work for our IT staff. But the thought was, could we have them do both to maximize one position for two needs?
Okay.
I got a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Graham.
Clay, when you were up here, when you presented your budget and stuff, and you talked about needing extra stuff, medical supply budget need to be increased and stuff like that, and some other parts of your budget, why wouldn't that increase any? I mean, he's getting more people and more calls, and it looks like to me he needs...
Was that not increased your?
It was not. And currently, this year, we are 13, as, today I ran the numbers, and we are $13,000 in the hole in the medical supply budget, which means we spent $13,000 more than you guys authorized us last year. And a lot of that is due to call volume, and everything, unfortunately, that we buy, just like when you buy at a store, it has a date on it. And whether we use it or not, we have to throw it out the door. It might cost $5, it might cost $10,000. But if it's got a date on it, we have to get rid of it. Or when DPH comes in to inspect us, they're going to fine us for having out-of-date stuff.
Yeah, we'll look at that, so we can add that for first reading. We'll go back and look at that adjustment.
And I noticed some lucky postage requests, that wasn't added either. I'm sure that's for extra billing or something.
It is, and again, every time we run a call, we have to do a bill. And more bills, more copies, more postage. In fact, I've already transferred money this year to put us back in the plus. And I'm going to have to transfer more money because we'll be back in the negative again. We'll probably spend somewhere in the neighborhood of about $17,000 just in postage this year, and I think our budget was $13.5.
But you're making money doing this billing with, that you're bringing in money with.
Oh, yes, sir. Our collections are up about $428,000 over the same period last year. So we're making the money, we just, we need some of it back.
We need the, I mean, the supplies and posters increased, right?
And that's just a simple job title change, if you guys don't mind.
And I've got a couple of things here while you up here. I notice our compaction, we've been increasing salaries and stuff for EMTs, I mean, paramedics, stuff like that, and we got, and shift supervisors look like their salaries is up pretty close to what the deputy director and your salary is. I think we probably need to make some adjustments there to spread that, get the director's salary up above the shift supervisors.
So the answer to that question is, I make about $4,000 more than our highest-paid supervisor. The next paid, highest-paid person at EMS are our three shift supervisors. The fourth highest-paid person is our deputy director. Our fifth highest-paid person is our operations manager. So all three shift supervisors make more than the two people that supervise them.
Do the shift supervisors get overtime pay?
They do get overtime, yes, sir.
So part of that is because of overtime pay?
It's because of the overtime, yes. And that is just based on the 122 days that they're scheduled, meetings, time and a half, late calls, time and a half.
I agree with Mr. Marsdeller on that. We got to get that fixed. That's, I'd like to see it where we, you know, chain of command, what they made.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Cato.
Thank you.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, Louise, go ahead.
The voice from the sky.
So I had a question for Mr. Cato, because I, and I couldn't hear exactly as clear. But just on that IT role, is that consistent with what you wanted?
IT performs all of our cardiac monitor stuff now, so if they need a position, I'm going to defer to Mr. Hernandez and Mr. Marsdell about that. But the equipment manager is the non-IT stuff, the $45,000 stretchers that we have in our ambulances, the 200-plus AEDs in the county, which is the sheriff's office, the rec department, all the fire departments, going to all the hospitals that we have to go to. So when we fly a patient out, or we transport a patient somewhere, and we drop a patient off, we leave equipment there, that's money that's owed to the county tax dollars. So we need to go track that equipment down and bring it back. If not, somebody might decide to repurpose it.
Yeah, that made sense to me, and I was good with that, and I agreed with that. And then I agree with Mr. Neal that we need to make those adjustments on the compaction. It's another thing that, Mr. Marshall, if you could look at it across our county and for all of our staff, this compaction issue is going to reflect the same issues that we just heard about. So if we could look at it across the board and just make sure that as you go up each level, we're not going to run into any of those issues, because I don't want to have a surprise later on.
We'll be glad to look through salaries. I think you will see compaction issues across the county. And so we've not done a salary study. We did in the past, and it didn't go anywhere. So we've been doing the one-offs, as we've been doing, trying, last year we adjusted 21 positions, I think, to address some of the compaction issues. This year, we've identified another 19 positions, so we've been kind of doing it in a one-off manner. And so we'll do another look to give you, there are some others, I'm sure.
I don't think we've got one as bad as this one here with EMS, so we got the shift supervisors making more than our deputy director.
Anything else?
Thank you. You have anything else, Mr. Louise?
That's it, thank you.
I want to make sure, from what was submitted for the equipment manager versus what was submitted for the accreditation manager, I don't think those were at the same salary level.
They were the same banding level, according to what the Ms. Rob, Ms. Walisa gave me when I asked her.
Okay, we'll double, thank you, we'll double-check that.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Harris. Okay, so to keep us moving forward, am I working? Next slide, please. All right, so if we revisit our external agencies, and hopefully this, okay, here we go. External agencies, and so I'll just jump us back to the beginning, but no changes here since the last time we met. And so one, before we get to the highlighted item, right before that, the Town of Kershaw YMCA pool. The pool project, where we have it noted, year three of three, it's actually year two of three for this contract, and so we will adjust that. But it's year two of three that we're budgeting for. And then in the Town of Kershaw contract for fire services, it's a 50/50 split between us and the Town of Kershaw. And so based on the individuals that are, that are working as a part of this contract, we've looked at their salaries to include the 5% across-the-board salary increase. And there's a few operational expenditures there, but just in the salaries is where we would have the 50/50 split. And the adjusted, there's an adjusted amount there, because what we looked at is, give me just a second.
I got a question.
Yes, Mr. McGree.
I think that's going to be to Dennis. Dennis, with the $40,000 for Kershaw Pool at YMCA, did we not have an agreement before YMCA came in, and we redid the agreement with the YMCA? Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we, okay.
Yeah, I do. So the 184.512 that's highlighted, we've adjusted that amount just by revisiting the contract to make sure that we do incorporate the 50/50 split just across the positions. So that amount there will change to 183,620. It's an $892 difference from what's on the screen. And so the portion that the county would absorb is 58,341.
So that's based on what we were...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And I see Mr. Player is okay with this.
All right, so I'm looking at our fund balance appropriations. We do have a couple of adjustments here, starting with the appropriation for watery, the algae treatment. The initial request was 30,000 in the recommendation. We had only recommended the 20,000, so we've adjusted that up to the full requested amount. No changes here. And then we've added the employee satisfaction survey for the HR department of 25,000 and then the affordable housing study of just over 42,000, bringing the fund balance appropriation for next year to 4,899.74.
And then before she gets to more summary, we did the meeting from Monday night. We will look to add another amount, or we need to figure out about a audit for procurement. So to have that work done, we need to factor that into next year's budget as well. So that will be another, I don't know if that's under $50,000 or not, but I'll make sure we will have that identified for first reading. So we'll try to factor that in as well.
Should we talk about the flock cameras now?
Yeah, because we do have them identified, I believe, is it five? We have, how many do we have identified under fund balance?
I have new cameras.
Do we have five identified? Do we have any in fund 11 or just in fund balance?
Maybe saying no.
So just five total out of fund balance. So that's what we've got programmed in here for 27,000.
And how many do we need?
30.
25 more.
30.
30 more.
30 more.
Maybe we should ask Sheriff Al to come up and.
We might want to ask the sheriff.
I just want to make sure that we can accommodate that and put them in location.
Ask the sheriff to come in, please.
Sheriff Al, could you come up to microphone?
As he's coming up, I've got a question or got a comment. These flock cameras, as Mr. Harper said, they have helped with crime so much. It's like having other officers out there. And I mean, us buying 30 cameras is a lot cheaper than hiring 30 officers because they have.
That's about the cost of hiring one or two officers.
Yeah, that's right. We can, I fully support these flock cameras. I mean, it's just the way of the future. That's right.
And you speaking to microphone, Sheriff Al.
Yes, sir. We are. Steve mentioned the 30 cameras. You know, they come at $3,500 apiece. There's a one-time installation cost of 650 per camera. But a great tool for us, I can tell you, the last few major crimes that have happened here, those cameras were very instrumental in us solving those cases.
Is 30 a good number? Does that make sense?
Well, I'll take 100 if you got 100. Yeah, 30, 30 is a good number. Yes.
Does that include like the, does all that, that video go to the sheriff's department or where is it?
Yes, sir. We have access to everything.
They would, they would cost us every year $3,000 per camera.
3,500 per camera. First year has the installation cost.
And what's that total?
Working on that.
125.
125.
We could add that to the 27, 750 there out of fund balance use. If you want to add 125,000 to it for 157, 750.
That'd be 35, right?
It'd be 35.
It'd be 35. We've already got five in the budget.
Well, if you want, so I didn't know if you're on top of or.
25 more. 25 more.
Okay.
Yeah.
So next.
You're saying 35. How many we're saying, Sheriff?
Well, 30 if you're going to count these five that we have, or if you want to do another 30, it's going to be 35. That's up to you guys.
Okay, 30 more.
30 more.
And you said the next year.
35 is what we're saying.
Costs will come down. We won't have no installation. It's just for the charge of it.
Right. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It's my understanding too that the, the maintenance is handled by the contract.
Yeah, something happens, they will come and replace it, take care of it.
Which is a monthly maintenance fee as long as you have the camera in.
Right.
I mean, yearly.
That's right. Again, let's just clarify, are we doing 30 or 35?
35.
35 total.
But the five that are already in the budget, it'll be an additional 30.
So 35 total. Thank you, Sheriff Al.
Okay. Any other questions, comments related to fund balance appropriation before we keep moving forward? Okay. All right. So just to look back at the salary compression, when we looked at all of the employees that are, all of the hourly employees, there were 113 that were, that are currently below the 15, $15 an hour. And so if we're adjusting them up just to get them to the 15, there's an average of about 11.3% increase across all of those salaries. And so anyone who is currently at 15 or above are those that we looked at to try to address poor compression. And so what we have on the screen is really just one model of trying to address those. And so what we had looked at is if we were to group them into two tiers, first tier being $15 up to 1650 and then 1651 to 1792, how we might potentially address both of those groups at once. And so the dollar amount that we had on the previous screen, the 180,000, is addressing them both at these two tiers at these percentages. And so it's really up to us what direction we go, whether we address them all at once, whether we do a single percentage or break them up into tiers. And so depending on what your interest is in that, we can look at what the cost would be if we were to move them all.
Any feedback from Ms. Harris?
What tier are we looking at?
This is really, this is really kind of a snapshot of everybody. And so everyone, there's 113 that were below the 15 that we addressed by moving them up to the minimum 15. And then there were about 100 more that were already at 15 or above that to address compression. This is the one scenario where if we broke them into two tiers based on these hourly amounts, the 15 to 1650, address them by moving them 5%, an additional 5%. And those at 1651 up to as high as 1792, address them by moving them an additional 3%. And there are some others that were beyond the 1792 after the 5% increase. There was about maybe 12 to 15 of those that they're, they're above 1792. So they would just remain at whatever the increase was after the 5% across the board if that's approved.
And so I'll tell you, Ms. Harris and I have done different scenarios trying to look at this to figure out what is a movement for compaction when you raise everyone quickly to 15. And as she said, about 100 will get to 15, they may get a larger percentage there, but there's another 100 that we think could be addressed in this 15, I'll say 1550 to $18 range that we think would make sense. I'll still say that maybe we could tweak the percentages. If you do those 100 who are in that range, maybe it's just a 3%. So if you're comfortable, we're going to tweak this a little bit more, but if you're comfortable with us basically giving a little bit, an additional percentage within the 1550 to the $18 range to address for some compaction, does that feel comfortable for y'all?
I think it would work. That, that looks good to me.
Okay. And I want to make sure that we do highlight that when we talk about the overall methodology to doing the 5% across the board increase for all county employees and then doing this adjustment, I don't think we've highlighted enough for you that we have not finalized our health insurance costs. And it's quite feasible that PIBA will have employees pay up to 4.6% increase this year for health insurance costs. And so when people see this 5% raise, I think that's very appropriate. But also we've got to keep in fact that we may have an increase as well to employees for health insurance. And so again, thinking about doing this compaction as well, I think it's more rationale that we can help do a little bit more adjustments for those even below the 1792 or the $18 range. Is that correct? We don't have the final numbers from PIBA about the employee?
To me, with this salary increase falling back on our employee, I mean, our health insurance falling back on our employees, to me, we should use that money to set aside for the 401K or the, or that awards money where merit thing. Take that money and pay their cost of their insurance with it. And that, that's going to help them a lot. To me, I think that, that awards everybody. And because insurance cost is constantly climbing and stuff. And to me, I think that would be a good move. I don't know how y'all feel, but.
It depends on the cost. It was not in the recommendation, was it?
When you're talking about if you, if the county, well, so PIBA kind of dictates how we split out the payment, but if you want to do something that would help offset the insurance increases, we could put that pool to the side. We've not thought about it that way, that we can put that percentage together and tell you what that dollar amount would be.
Yeah, that, that'd be a pretty substantial amount of money.
Yeah, 4.6, yeah, of the health insurance.
Michael, so does the county set the percentage of what they cover for employees? Or is that a set amount or set percentage? Meaning some companies I've been involved with might peg that they pay 80% of medical and the employees responsible for 20%. Does the county go in that direction or how does, how does that work?
We'll double check on that. I don't know what leeway we have from PIBA, but basically for the last two, three years, they've said the employer needs to bear the increases, which we've done. But I do think PIBA dictates, but I don't think that means that we may not be able to offset it somewhere else. So we'll have to.
I was just curious. I mean, I know that's what happens in the private side, but I don't know what that happens.
As of now, roughly the county's paying 86%.
Which is very generous.
Of the health costs. 81 to 86% is what the county share is for employee health coverage.
Mr. Louise, do you have any comments on the, where we're at right now?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So if we just begin to summarize only the adjustments that were made since last time, these are all pulled together here in a side-by-side view to show those items that council had proposed since last time and for which there would be, if we were to pull in all of those things that were, you know, of interest last time, there is a millage increase potentially associated with that. And so we've put that beside a no-millage increase. And the no-millage increase is bringing some of those things in, some at adjusted amounts to use up the portion of the new revenue that we didn't last time. And so, let me see. I'll, I'll keep us here just to show the adjustments. So as we go down the list, you'll see the first adjustment for where we brought down the portion for the sheriff's animal shelter collaboration, looking at the economic development interns, it was of interest to council to maintain that no-millage increase. We took that out. Same thing with the accreditation officer. With the three EMTs and the paramedics, we included those in the no-millage scenario, but only at half-year. So to start January 1st, we took out the adaptive sports coordinator and also solid waste coordinator. And we kept in the convenience site techs as well as the upgrade to the public safety communications director. The career ladder increase for the coroner's office, we took that out. We adjusted for the sheriff's adjustment. We adjusted that down to bring that down to within a budget from 20,000 down to 16,000. So that adjustment there, that $5,200 adjustment is to address that. Sheriff's 24-hour medical, the council's proposed, we had included it at half-year. We adjusted it down to just $20,000. So whatever the sheriff was able to cover with that $200,000 is included there. Funds for clothing for the sheriff, we've included that in both the proposed and the no-millage scenario. And we've kept in the animal shelter adjustment for supplies and contracted services as well as the adjustment there for the compression related to the increase to the 15, $15 an hour minimum and the external agencies. Those last two items, we know that will potentially be adjusted. The external agencies adjusted to just over the 56,000. And the 15-hour minimum, whatever model we settle on will be adjusted there as well. And so when we look at these two side-by-side, the proposed changes for council, it increased it an additional $2,038,609. And so when we compare that to what we had already programmed of the new revenue, we had 8 million and change. We had already programmed 6.9 million. And so with the additional items that were added, it brought it to, of the 1,64,000 that we still had available, we would be short there 973,000 and change. And so there is where if we were to include everything that was proposed last time, not considering anything that was, you know, of interest today, but just those things from last time, we'd be looking, we'd be looking at approximately a 1.6 mil increase in that scenario. And so with the adjustments to keep us at a no-mil increase, adjusting those things down, we would be using 982,944. And we still have just, just over 81,000 still available that has not been programmed of the new revenue. And so just to kind of get an idea of if we are going to make adjustments of any kind across either of these scenarios, you can kind of see where you stand. And so if we were to add in the additional items that were talked about today, some of those things we might be able to accomplish with fund balance so it wouldn't impact, impact the mil increase. But for those things that would become a part of the recurring budget, it would be above what we've estimated for new revenue. And so then we would talk about the potential for millage increase if that's of interest to council.
And then we also need to factor if we want to add a few more for the medical supplies, postage, if you want to do a chain of command, some other salaries. So again, we might still want to leave some wiggle room in there. But when we're just taking the pure number there in the bottom line that Ms. Harris outlined, we had originally programmed in my recommended budget, the 6.9 million of the additional revenue. We did say the revenue projection should reveal just over $8 million. And so council does have roughly $1 million that you can add programming to, which we've done here. So I think the question now to come for you on the 27th for a first reading, what on these things do you want to keep in there? Are you comfortable if you want to do the medical for the sheriff at 200,000? Do you want to lower that, up that? Do you want to change some of those positions that we just discussed? And so certainly open for your input to not do a millage increase or if you want to do a millage increase, we'll go with that.
The medical, it's really doesn't apply to 2026, does it?
Correct. But we talked about there could be an opportunity if you do another nurse practitioner on duty, if you do a contract, that there's some way that we could enhance the medical within the facility starting this year because we're talking about how there's still high rates of calls to the jail for EMS. And so is there a way that we might be able to do something with another contract to help that situation? But it's not as urgent.
That would be a short-term contract because you'll end up contracting with a different provider for the full-time service.
I hate to go back, but I need, I want to make sure I understand this, the McDonald's Green proposal on slide six. Is it, those are full year? Is that a full year funding?
Yes. So yeah, those positions are for the one new captain position and adjusting some of the other positions to make that a 24/7. That is the full-time year for McDonald Green. And going back to, I think, your timeframe, so we're having, working on scheduling the meetings with towns to talk about fire service. I will say within fall, September, county council will have to make a decision about how we want to approach fire service funding. So you could hold off on the implementation of McDonald Green for nine months.
I don't, I don't want to do that. I just don't, I'm going to be frank, I don't want to commit a full year of funding when I really do not, I don't think it's right to do a full year of funding. So I, I would like us to consider maybe six months and that should give us time to figure out what those next steps are. I mean, that's just my two cents on that.
Any other additional comments?
Yes, could you back up one slide there? Okay. I mean, there's some, I don't want to see no millage increase. I tell you, I hope we've got enough money left that's, I guess it's 6.9 million that you have for the budget. But, you know, there's some areas in there that we can adjust if we need to, that adaptive sports coordinator could come out, the solid waste coordinator could come out. There's some other areas that we could adjust some things down some to keep them having a millage increase. I mean, I should, what are y'all's opinions, but I don't want to see no millage increase this year.
I know Ms. McGriff has had to step out for, but she was very, she, she said, she left and we talked about. and we talked about this, that she wanted to put her vote in for the adaptive sports coordinator position, because she felt like that was needed.
That might be something we could pick up next year, but if that's something, that's something that we could leave off this year.
In some of these positions, we could convert to half-year positions, which would help.
I just wanted.
If we wanted to put them in, we'd put them in at a half a year.
To make sure I understand, and I know you just mentioned it, this is based off of $6.9 million, or is this based off of $8 million?
Off the $8 million of projected new revenue. So what we have here, if you go to the next slide, is based upon the $8 million as we have there, the next-to-last line, the 803-720.
Okay.
You have a cushion between the 69 and the 803. The $1 million basically is what you have available to program still, that I did not program or recommend in my budget. Knowing that we're doing all this fund balance use of roughly $5 million, my approach was if we have excess revenues, it will replenish the fund balance. This is the most year I've ever recommended for fund balance use. So I was fine to have a cushion in there, but if you want to do, you find some other priorities that we've talked about for positions and things. If you want to do some of these other things you want to add, you do have revenue cushion.
Without doing a millage increase.
Without doing a millage increase.
Right. That's kind of where I was going.
You're going to have some major revenue sources come on next year that.
Correct.
Costco and Target and.
And we've done a little bit of that factor, yeah.
A lot of commercial stuff, and y'all figured that in, the projections.
Our revenue projections of the $8 million is the highest revenue projection we've had in ten years, in new revenue. I think roughly last year, we had $3.4 million in new revenue. But this is, should be sustained for at least the next two or three years, knowing what we do have coming on for retail, the number of new houses in the project. If you just look at the number of new developments where the building permits for housing residential have been obtained already.
Roswell's just starting. I mean, they're going for a while. That's 1,800 houses right there, obviously not coming in in 12 months, but.
And that's why we're encouraged, even looking ahead, when we did the revenue projections, even next year and the year after, should be some good additional revenue for us. But that is why the revenue's grown so much in terms of our projection for the $8 million. So that's why I'm saying, I think there's comfort that we will realize $8 million in new revenue in the next year without a millage increase. And so if you want to program some different positions or other service enhancements, or whatever it may be, you have that roughly $1 million that you can give me some guidance to bring forward for first reading.
I would just like to make sure we have plenty of money in our maintenance for, you know, we're building these new facilities and like we have obtained a building on Linwood Drive and our, the Burns Ford facility, that we have plenty of funding to maintain these facilities, because they, you know, I rode by Linwood Drive on my way here, and it saved million-dollar worth of equipment sitting inside that fence and, you know, the grass grown up. It needs proper signage, and we need to make sure we have plenty of money to maintain these facilities. And I would also, if we have anything, you know, we have these industrial sites that we have graded over the years, and I went by one of them day, and they were actually cutting the grass. But we do need to look at possibly spending more money on these sites for the erosion control, especially on our new site. I mean, there's nothing you can do, but they need, you know, they, it's just got to have some maintenance to fix the washouts and stuff like that, you know, because you want to make a good first impression when they do get somebody to come look at their, these site-ready sites. And over, you know, ever since we've put them in, we've always, they haven't been maintained, you know, like they should have been.
It's hard to say you've got a site-ready site when you've got three-foot furrows down the middle of it.
Yeah, you know, so.
And I will say that you will see in the budget specifically to the new emergency management storage facility on Linwood Drive, we will have public works there already lined up to mow. But we have, I think, $138,000 in there to do the security system and other upgrades. The Burns Ford location, we still have to come back to you with the architecture outfit, but that will have funds in there as well for that facility. So we are programming in money for that. And I'll say to advance, though, what I need to hear from council today is if you go through this, I mean, even on here with the coroner's career ladder, if you want to support that or not, if you all are trying to have us do some quick adding and things, if you want to do another $900,000 on top of my recommendation from these last two slides, I'd like to hone in on those if you want to back up one slide, Ms. Harris. If you all are coming to some consensus, if we've already kind of given you some scenarios, if you leave off the economic development, excuse me, if you leave off the accreditation officer, but now if you want to put back on the equipment manager position for the similar pay, we would add that back on. So we can start doing some quick math. We did say if you want to go forward and do the half-year staffing for the new EMS truck staffing, that's what we're looking at. And again, if you want the adaptive sports coordinator, we can slide that over. But I need some feedback if you're trying to get to a finite dollar amount to avoid a millage increase, but yet do some enhancements to my recommended budget. There's, I think, where you all are focusing your conversation.
Well, if you have the funding to do the EMTs and the paramedics for one year, I would recommend that they go ahead and be funded, because that's.
Well, we don't if you do the other things on there. So if you want to make the full year funding for EMT, that alone right there is $845,000 of the roughly million additional money you're looking at.
Okay.
And so, yeah, so I'm trying to make sure I'm in sync that if you all want to program, add in another $900,000 or $1 million in new expenditures. This is the list we're working from. And so I need to know what to bring forward in the first reading on the 27th.
Did you cover part of that from fund balance? And I only say that because if we're only going to budget half a year, then we're still going to have to budget a full year the next year. So it doesn't matter if you put fund balance in there to bring them on for a year or nine months or whatever.
If you put the, are you saying specific to the EMS positions?
Right.
If you do the other $400,000 out of fund balance, it's not ideal.
Fund balance is specifically for one time.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but, you know, if we're putting a half a year's worth of budget in there, we're going to have to take a full year the next time anyway.
We will.
So, you know, to be able to put the service out there for our citizens, you know, I'm willing to talk, at least talk about it.
Got it. And you're right, I understand that. But even doing that fund balance, half of that at fund balance, and putting half of it on the operating budget, you still, if you go to the next page, that takes us, just that column takes us to $982,000. So again, if you want to lower the medical funds for sheriff, and just you're right, hold off on that until the new facility's open. There's $200,000 that we could either put towards the EMS positions or towards some of the other positions like the equipment manager or other on there. So we can do some back and forth with this.
Now, the $200,000, we're already funding, this is for funding another position, right? For the sheriff's medical funds for the half-year?
That would be a, to add.
Just a half.
Service, yeah. I don't know if it's a nurse practitioner, what it may look like, but that would be roughly a half-year or a limited medical service.
Is this adding this additional, we already paying for medical services?
Paying for 12 hours a day.
Correct. So the medical services contract, we've actually increased it, no matter what, we've increased it $42,000 this year in the sheriff's budget, because his contract's going up for what we have right now. That will continue. But what we're finding is that there's still need to respond to medical incidents, because it's not 24/7 medical coverage.
I understand. So you're looking at $400,000 to go to 24/7 besides what was in last year's budget?
On top of, yeah. So that'd be, we have a medical lineup now, that's funded, and then this would be for additional coverage for medical at the jail.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes, Mr. Luis.
Is that something that we could, is that something that we could do internally? I think I had asked that question at the last meeting.
Yeah, actually, we did probe that conversation if there was an opportunity for that. Talking to both some of the departments impacted, we did not see that that would be a good solution with internal staff, because we might have staffing problems for it and still be in the same situation without dedicated staff who could guarantee that we fill that time. But also, we may want to have different conversations with the sheriff on that one as well.
So I'm saying if we add dedicated staff for that.
We could do, that's what the funding, yeah, the funding on there for the $200,000 could be dedicated staff, but we would look to do that for an outside contract?
I'm saying have dedicated staff internally.
And part of those conversations, we can ask again, but part of those conversations raise concern that we could actually find dedicated staff to do that. If you want to bring in four qualified people or six qualified people over time, we weren't assured that we would have the staff coverage for that, from internal, from internal staff.
To be able to find, you're saying?
Correct. We don't know if we'd be able to fill those slots if we use internal staff to maintain that coverage level. But I can give some more information on that. We did have that conversation, but it didn't seem like it was going to be a sound proposal to have internal staff be the ones to do that medical service.
All right, so we need to be prepared on the 27th, go through this, and come back and tell you what parts we want to put in there on the 27th.
I'd rather do it today, so I bring you a balanced budget on the 27th.
Okay.
So if you start on that first page, I'm hearing, I mean, I don't know where you all, in terms of economic development, that's not that much money, but if you want to leave that out, you can have a little consensus on that. If you want to change accreditation officer to the train officer, we can slide that money over and see what we kind of tally up here. If you're comfortable with factoring in the EMS positions half-year and whether we supplement it with fund balance and do a full year, there's that option. So I just would like a little bit more understanding where, if I'm going to bring what positions forward in the 27th.
I think we could look at also possibly doing some half-year positions as well in the stretch.
Sure.
Stretch things.
Absolutely.
Let's start with economic development. Do you want to leave the interns in or out as it's proposed right now?
Yeah.
Got one out. Looks like enough head shakes to say out, so we're going to take that one out. Okay, accreditation officer, changing that to equipment officer. Do we want to do that for a half-year?
That would help to bring this down.
I'm hearing some support for that. Okay.
A half-year.
EMTs, we've got half-year.
We're going to keep the EMTs at half-year.
Yeah, they could get them higher.
Okay. All right, the adapted sports coordinator.
How much we got to cut?
Right now, it's $94,000. If you did a half-year, then you're looking at $47,000, $48,000, something in that neighborhood.
Say out.
Can we do half?
I would definitely support it for a half-year.
All right.
We'll list that for now at half, and we'll keep this tally if my fine budget staff are tallying this up here.
Okay, we got solid waste coordinator.
I say frankly, that's something the department director said could hold off on.
Right. I mean, I think at some point in time, we need it.
I suggest let's hold off on that and definitely go back to that next year. I think that would be the way to go on that.
Solid waste, adding 12 part-times leave-in.
I need.
So that would be adding two days of service at six of our 12 convenience sites. That would be the cost impact to do that, to staff two additional days at six of our convenience sites.
So could we go to half-year on that or three-quarter year, maybe save some money on it, because it's going to take a while to ramp up to get those people?
Yeah, we can come back with a half-year plan or a nine-month plan.
Why don't you just say it starts on January 1st, 2026, and it's a clean, clean, new hours, starting in 2026.
New year, new hours. We can do that.
All right, so we're taking that to half, so you gained about $95,000 or so there. Public safety communications, upgrade the director, looks like that's already stayed in. Everybody good at keeping it there. All right, next slide, please. I would like to add in the coroners back in, so.
I agree with you, Brian.
Agree.
Yeah, I agree.
We'll slide that over, okay?
It's a good idea.
That's right. Thank you for the input. Appreciate the input.
Okay.
Okay. On the medical funding, do we want to do it for a half a year?
Or none, yeah.
I mean, we could.
Should I be posing this a different way?
That's.
Input.
Is that something?
Do we have input on that?
Can we, can we, I personally vote if we could hold off on that, we could not vote and just.
We'll have more conversation with the sheriff on that, and we'll see if we have any other thoughts or.
That's intended for the new detention facility.
It is, yeah.
It is.
All right.
All right, where are we at now, ladies?
Tell to Ms. Harris so she can say it in the microphone, how much have we added back in for the total of the adds? Oh, no, I'm sorry. If we add the slide, the first slide, and we add, taking out the $200,000 for sheriff's medical, how much total have we added when we do the half-year convenience sites?
When you say taking out the 200 for sheriff's medical.
Correct.
Are you taking it back up to the 455?
I've taken it out altogether.
Not doing it at all.
Yeah, deleting it altogether.
Okay, so not doing that at all. Okay.
So we should, we should be balanced with whatever we put back in.
I want to make sure that I've captured everything, so if you'll just give me a moment, and I'm just going to walk the whole list.
If you go to the prior slide, you can start with the prior slide.
Okay, so I'm going to start here.
Yep.
And, just a second, let me shift.
So 118 for the equipment manager, the EMTs at 219, paramedics 204.
Well, starting with, let me, let me, let me just go back to the interns. The interns are no.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, accreditation officer, half.
That's correct.
EMTs and the paramedics at half.
That's about $650,000.
Correct.
Okay. Adaptive sports, half.
Correct.
Waste, solid waste coordinator, no.
Correct.
Correct.
Convenience site techs, half.
Half.
Public safety upgrade, yes.
Yes, next slide.
Career ladder for coroner, yes.
And that's where we're at. So where are we at?
So right now, of the $1,64,868, you have left to use $492,829.
So then you need to go on down if you want to do the sheriff fund clothing.
Is adding, what about the cameras? Is adding?
That's fund balance.
Fund balance, okay.
What about McDonald's Green? I mean, we, because that would take $130,000 off if you do it in six months.
But if you add, if you want to miss, Harris, if you want to keep adding there, if you want to do the compaction, if you're okay with the compaction, we need to put that money in there for the 189, and put in the animal shelter and. money in there for the 189 and put in the animal shelter and the additional sheriff funds.
Yeah, but the 189 was already in there, so that was already in the calculations, right?
Yeah, but I don't know.
Right, I'm starting with your entire bucket of the $1,640, only adding the things that you want to keep either at the full amount or the adjusted amount. And so right now, if I pull back in the compaction increase, you're down to having 303,785 available to keep spending.
And then did you also add in those other ones for the animal shelter and the sheriff yet?
Have not, but I can.
I think council's interested in having those added as well as the Kershaw contract.
Okay, so Kershaw is yes.
So then that leaves.
Sheriff's medical is, is that a yes, no, or maybe?
The medical supplies would be a yes for 23,000.
I think she's talking about.
No, the sheriff's.
Sheriff, 200,000 right now, that's.
Right now, you have 246.
We're going to go back and discuss with the sheriff. I'm seeing head shaking back there, so no, there is.
Do not include that, yeah, do not include that.
I mean, couldn't you technically use the, the clothing as fund balance? This is, I'm assuming that's one time? I mean, I know it's not a lot.
There's always, there's always, this is for the new officers, but there's always clothing for sheriff's deputies. But I think to get to the million-dollar delta there, when you add in those other remaining things on the slide there, Ms. Harris, what do we come up with as remaining?
Yep, I pulled back in, I pulled back in the Kershaw contract, I pulled back in the sheriff's clothing at 15,523 and pulled back in the animal shelter supplies, so you're, you have left 207,787 to spend.
And within that, we also need to factor in if we're going to add more back for the medical supplies for EMS postage, if you want to do the audit for procurement, and then if we're going to adjust for chain of command things as well, but putting back in for medical supplies, postage, and the audit, you can say that's probably roughly 100,000. So we're still within the no-millage increase. And then to talk about, if you do McDonald Green, less, you're right, if you do that for half a year, then there is a $60,000.
Oh, it's 130.
So if you do it for half a year?
It's 100, yeah, two, and the, there's two things, it's 260, right?
So we'll, we'll, we'll factor that in to make sure we get the right number on that. So all that to say is, I think from what you all have communicated to us, we can still add these back in that it will be within the projected amount of additional revenue, so no-millage increase. And even at first reading on the 27th, we'll come back to you about the medical supplies postage, the audit number, McDonald Green number, and you still may have a little bit of money if you want to program anything else or if there's something else. I know there may be some requests from the Indianland Fire, but that's within their fire budget, so that's separate from our operating budget. But I think if anything else comes up, you can address it with a little bit of wiggle room still with additional revenue projected.
All right, any additional input?
Just clarification, so yeah, you mentioned Indianland Consolidated, so how does, how does that new station and how we approach that factor into the budget here?
So right now, it's on the CIP list, and we're going to adopt a separate ordinance for CIP. Within the CIP, we have it listed as unfunded. And so as we have our summer and our fall conversations with municipalities and how we all decide to go forward with the fire districts.
That's all part of that.
We should identify the funding stream for the unfunded portion of that CIP right now.
Mr. Louise, do you have any input?
No, I'm good, if you all can hear me.
All right, thank you. If we get to something, you need to say something, just blurt it out.
Thank you.
Okay, are we good from where we're at? We good from where we're at?
We are very good. Thank you for the input. We will bring to you on first reading. Again, as we highlighted, you will be in very capable hands with Ms. Snowden and our finance team. Ms. Merk Dupont and I will not be in person on the 27th, but we'll have the first reading of the budget ordinance. And you'll see these again added, and we will bring you a no-millage budget. It will be balanced with a little, hopefully, excess, and then if you want to make any amendments or adjustments, that will be first reading time, and that'll give us time, again, to make sure everyone understands for the audience, that we will have the public hearing scheduled on the third reading, which is at the end of June. So thank you for your input.
Does Ms. Snowden get the honor of sitting right here next week?
I believe so, we'll see. On 27th, I believe so.
She's like, please don't put me up there.
Somebody to question, so we need somebody else too.
I want to, I want to thank everybody for your input. It's been very valuable. I think a lot of what we did today was putting our, our taxpayers first and providing additional services that are going to be beneficial to them, and that's, that's part of what we're elected to do is to make sure we can put that stuff on. Do we have any additional things we need to do?
No, I think we'll just highlight on that next slide as we close out for the taxpayers. Again, this is a reassessment year, so we will be doing notices, not bills, notices in July based upon the assessed value, which may be different than market value, that people have that distinction on their notices. But the net result is there will be a rollback as of now planned for the county operating. I want to make sure council does see though, that there is a county debt millage increase, there's a rollback, and then to just cover our debt and principal payments, it does show an increase in the county debt, but the overall millage for the county should go down because of reassessment. So I just make sure we're clear though, you will see a little millage increase in the county debt line, but we will show the rollbacks or factor in the rollbacks, and then we'll see a net decrease to the overall millage. So that's important for taxpayers to hear that.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Harris and team.
Any other comments? If not, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Have a motion from Mr. Mossdeller. Have a second from Mr. Neal, any discussion? Will you stand adjourned?